I'd like to call this meeting to order. Welcome back from closed session. I'll turn it over to our legal counsel to report out on closed session.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. The city council met with legal counsel regarding one existing litigation matter. That matter is Contra Costa flood control in Water Conservation District versus Gary Eames, Contra Costa Superior Court, case number C-15-02052. Direction was given to the city attorney. No further reportable action was taken.
Very good. Thank you. Turn it over to our city clerk for roll call.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Wilson.
Here.
Councilmember Tiscorino.
Here.
Councilmember Ogerchak.
I'm present.
Mayor Protem Thorpe.
Here.
Mayor Wright.
Here. If you'd all please join me and pledge allegiance, ask Councilmember Tiscorino to lead us.
Mr. Wright? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, welcome, everybody, to City Council, Antioch City Council meeting this evening. Do we have any announcements of civic and community events? We'll start with Marcus Jefferson.
Good evening, council. I'm here. My name is Marcus Jefferson. I'm here representing Kangazoom, right here in Antioch, 501 Auto Center Drive. And we are proposing to do events here at our facility. We want to do some for the Fourth of July. I spoke with the mayor, and he mentioned "celebrate Antioch" to me. And I'm going to try to connect with them as well. But I wanted to also pitch a proposal to our council and get their feedback on having a Fourth of July event in our venue. What I'm thinking is having food trucks in our parking lot, other vendors, and things of that nature to surround the parking lot. And then they stay to watch the fireworks, which is going to be displayed at the fairground. Last year during this time, we wasn't quite open yet. But when I drove by my facility, everybody was already parked in my parking lot to watch the fireworks anyway. So I'm thinking that I should capitalize on the event. I really want to be part of the Antioch community. Our business is still virtually new, but it's, I believe, it's a cornerstone of Antioch because it's been known as Golfing Games. And we actually currently plan on switching our names back to the original Golfing Games because that's what everyone knows it as. Every time I say Kangazoom, I get called Kangaroo and everything else other than our actual name. So we're actually toying with the idea of bringing back Golfing Games. I spoke with the former owner of Golfing Games. He okayed it, so that's not going to be a problem. But like I said, I really want to be part of this community. Any event that we can have at our facility, I'm open to. We're going to have our City Chamber miniature golf tournament this coming June 23rd. Everyone's invited, definitely. And like I said, if we can have anything possible, Girl Scouts, Boy Scouts, baseball teams, we ran it out to senior homes, anything of the sort. I just want to be part of this community and watch Antioch grow and be part of it. So that's why I'm here for today.
Okay? Thank you, Marcus.
Thank you.
Are there any other announcements of civic and community events?
None received.
There are announcements of boards and commission openings.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. With the council's appointment of the alternate member to the Board of Administrative Appeals to be a full member of the board, we're announcing an opening for the alternate position. It's a two-year term on the Board of Administrative Appeals. The board consists of five members and one alternate appointed by the mayor and confirmed by the majority of the council. And the alternate member shall serve a term or two years. They must be a resident of the city of Antioch. The board hears appeals regarding administrative decisions of any official of the city dealing with the municipal code interpretations. The meetings are held on the first Thursday of every month at 3:00 PM in the city council chambers. Commissions are required to submit an FPPC, Fair Political Practices Commission Form 700 Statement of Economic Interests upon assuming office within 30 days and then every year thereafter, no later than April 1st. Also, newly appointed commissioners and board members are required to complete the AB-1234 Ethics Training within one year of appointment. And all commissioners must then take the AB-123 Ethics Training every two years thereafter, and it's available online at no cost. We're accepting applications. The deadline is June 30th, and we have applications available at the City Hall and the Clerk's counter and Deputy Clerk's counter on the third floor, and they're also available online on the city website.
Thank you. Do we have any public comments that are not on the agenda? Followed by Harry Thurston.
My name is Charles Patchen, 2916 Sunflower Drive. Ship's post and instructor of the historical light ship relief. I'm here on behalf of the Anchor Program, Light Ship Relief, and owner, Mr. John Hastings. Mr. Hastings asked me to speak on behalf of the Anchor Program today to emphasize how serious we are about what the Anchor Program can offer the city of Antioch and its surrounding communities. We are asking for birthing rights to the pier behind Humphreys and possibly the use of the building for the community-based programs led by the Anchor Program. I'd refer the specifics to John Hastings' email that was sent to the whole board. The Anchor Program teaches men and women how to work in the maritime industry. With a wide variety of job opportunities, youth as early as the age of 16 can begin their careers in shipping, transportation, commercial fishing, cruise liners, ferries, offshore operations, government, science, and research, and many more. These jobs start at $50,000 to $90,000 a year. Men and women are in control of their earning potential and career paths, giving them financial security over their lives. Currently, the Anchor Program offers engineering, deck seamanship, life skills, and food handling. We are also looking to expand to a steward department, which will include culinary arts. Just a few facts. Seventy-four percent of the world trade is by sea. Ninety-five percent of the U.S. trade is by sea. Fifty-five percent of everybody lives along the coastline. Sixty percent of our energy is by sea trade. It's a $300 billion a year industry, so there's lots of money to be had. We offer the community a venue, a historic ship in the city of Antioch, and a venue to do holiday events, whatever. We offer tours, education, just a few of the things that we offer. In closing, the Anchor Program and the release ship being birthed behind Humphreys and possible use of the Humphreys Building would be an added asset to revitalizing the city of Antioch and the surrounding communities, offering countless possibilities and a historic attraction to help bring commerce to downtown Antioch. With increasing problems with jobs, youth, and disadvantaged families, we provide a sustainable solution with long-term effects for men and women in our community, offering a real career path forward.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Harry Thurston. Followed by Loretta Swett.
Good morning, Mayor, City Council. Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak in front of you. I'm here for, I'm Harry Thurston. I live in Antioch, and I'm here to ask the mayor to sign on for the city to the climate mayor's letter to President Trump on rollback of U.S. climate actions. I'll read the opening part and the closing part of the letter, then give you the full letter to respond to. Dear President Trump, as members of the mayor's National Climate Action Agenda, we represent more than 42 million Americans in 75 cities across our nation, in red and blue states alike. We write to strongly object to your actions to rollback critical important U.S. climate policies, including the Clean Power Plan and vehicle fuel efficiency standards, as well as proposed budget cuts to the EPA and critical federal programs like Energy Star. Climate change is both the greatest single threat we face and our greatest economic opportunity for our country. This is why we affirm our city's commitment to taking every action possible to achieve the principles and goals of the Paris Climate Agreement and engage states, businesses, and other sectors to join us. As the climate mayors, we wrote to you during your transition, asking that you work with cities on climate action, the nation's first responders and economic hubs, and to embrace the Paris Climate Agreement commitment. Instead, we fear your administration's recent actions will undermine America's leadership on climate action and will take us backwards. We urge you to change course and to join us in the meantime. And in the meantime, American cities will continue to lead the way in moving forward in protecting our residents from the disaster effects of climate change and creating a thriving 21st century economy. A total of 294 mayors, 92 mayors have signed on to this. Of that, El Cerrito, Fairfield, Fremont, Hayward, Los Gatos, Menlo Park, Millbrae, Mountain View, Newark, Oakland, Palo Alto, Petaluma, Redwood City, Sacramento, San Francisco, San Jose, San Leandro, Santa Rosa, Stockton, Sunnyville, and Union City have signed it. So I urge the mayor to sign on to this letter, and that can be accomplished through an email to info@climate-mayors.org. I will give you the letter and the direction so you can read the full letter. But I find this is a very, very important item we should all consider. Thank you very, very much.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members, city manager, and city attorney. And thank you all for being here to listen to us. The East County Times had an article, and someone was commenting that California is just in its infancy with the new marijuana law, and all cities should take their time, talk with their counterparts in nearby cities, and really think about what to do that is best for the city and its residents. That sounded like good advice to me. I feel people voted to legalize marijuana to stop the illegal drug trade, fire hazard growhouses, and not arrest people smoking grass in their homes unless it creates neighborhood adversity, and not putting teenagers in prison for smoking dope. And kids should know it's called dope for a reason. Being desperate for money is one thing, and looking out for the good of Antioch is quite another. I'm asking city council to find the balance and consider all the hard work you've done for the better of Antioch. I also want the Economic Development Commission spending its time soliciting financial tech and tourism developers and offering them incentive to come to Antioch. In my opinion, Humphreys is too large and too expensive for one tenant. I feel it's a great idea to turn Humphreys into a Galleria of small space shops, like ice cream or pretzel stand, an earring shop, hot dog, iron art, kids' trinkets, a kayak rental, now that you have that, a tea shop, a homemade pasta shop. So the diversity of businesses would interest a broad scope of people instead of just one place, one type of food, one business, one atmosphere. To me, that is not enough. And let's ask ourselves, what is Antioch's identity? Antioch has a great mission statement, but what is Antioch's identity? Antioch has Mother Nature's natural beauty and waterfront property. Antioch is a city of churchgoers and cares deeply about veterans. We have an increasing first-class police force with a new chief and retired chief on the periphery. Antioch has just about every major retail corporation on the stock market in or around it, and private corporations, and PG&E is here. A lot of people are involved with the schools, and children aspire to a successful, happy life. I say Antioch's identity is one of beauty, safety, and prosperity, and I am asking city council to solidify that identity so that no one can label us otherwise. I am asking city council to firmly promote that we decide our identity of a good city with good people and not let anyone trample on it. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other public comments?
None received.
Moving to city council committee reports. Councilmember Wilson.
Yes, thank you. Kind of a busy last couple of weeks. So last week, I attended up in Sacramento the Housing, Community, and Economic Development Policy Meeting along with our city clerk, Mr. Simonson. And lots of things were discussed. A lot of the Assembly bills coming up, a lot of Assembly bills on housing, workforce housing, education housing. But a bill that's coming up, and I just found out it passed through the Senate today and it's going back to the Assembly, is Assembly Bill 649. And you're wondering how that affects us. I know we were looking more into Wi-Fi in our public areas, and this Assembly bill would restrict it, would not give us any control. And we really need to oppose that bill to make sure that we have control on how Wi-Fi is used in public areas. So that was one of many issues that we spoke about at that particular meeting, but I felt that that one's really affected us the most. Also, a couple of weeks ago, myself and Mayor Wright attended our Sycamore Ad Hoc Committee, which is actually doing really well. It's made up of Mayor Wright, myself, and stakeholders of that particular community. And as we had said last time, we're really reaching out and getting their opinions on what they want and what they want to see in that community. It's a lot of resources, whether it be a park, or resources for their youth as far as mentoring and programs. So our last meeting, we really kind of looked at other cities that were successful in having youth programs going on. So we're going to look at that. Our next upcoming meeting, we are actually going to meet with a lot of youth in the Sycamore area and get their input on what they are looking for in that area. So I'm really proud and excited of this committee that this time we're really taking the approach of, instead of coming in and telling them what we think they should do, really getting their input on the law-abiding community members in there, on what they really want to see and how they want to see their community grow.
Thank you. Councilmember Thorpe.
I attended the East County Water Management Association Governing Board meeting. We reviewed the grants that have been allocated and, more importantly, any upcoming opportunities for grants. We also held our elections. And so Mayor Bob Taylor of Brentwood was elected chair of the governing board, and I was elected vice chair. Then I attended the mayor's conference on your behalf, and we got a presentation from Darian Louie, executive director of the East Bay Economic Development Alliance. And she basically gave us a state of our local economy and forecast for the East Bay and for Contra Costa County. We also voted to endorse Senate Bill 231. And that bill is currently in the Assembly, excuse me, in the Senate, so they'll be deciding on that before the next mayor's conference. And so basically, what that does is it clarifies the word sewer for the purposes of Proposition 218, which includes what are commonly called storm sewers. And that financing for such systems and stormwater runoff management would allow local agencies to establish stormwater management utility fees in a manner similar to the way in which water utility fees are set without going through Proposition 218 election process. So that's an important bill for local municipal governments like ours, and I hope that it passes. So that's my report.
Thank you. Councilmember Tiscorino.
Yeah, no committees to report.
Councilmember Ogerchak.
I have a couple. May was my month for the League of Cities. It's our regular meeting, and we met in Danville. Carolyn Coleman, who is the league's new executive director, was there. She spoke, and she gave us her vision for the league and the direction that it was going. Then I had my policy committee in Sacramento on Friday. It's a Governance Transparency and Labor Relations Policy Committee. It was all on pension. And we actually got to hear from the Governor-Treasurer State Pension Prefunding Proposal. It was given by Tim Schaefer, who happens to be the deputy treasurer of the public finance of the Office of the Treasurer, John Chang. And it was very interesting because the governor has some proposals that's going to be coming out for the cities, so there might be some funding mechanisms for the cities to be able to use for our CalPERS issues. So more of that to follow when all that's fine and done.
Thank you. I had the opportunity to continue the ad hoc Sycamore Committee with Councilmember Wilson, and some really good work being done. Excited to benefit that community. We all had the opportunity to attend on Saturday the grand opening of Prosserville Park, so I want to thank our Public Works Department and our Police Department for being there and our council for attending. It was a wonderful event and great to see a beautiful new playground structure in one of our areas of town where the children have a lot of needs. So that was great to be at. I attended Transpland last week, and we discussed the Balfour Overpass that's being done. For those of you who've been driving into Brentwood, you see all that dirt that's being laid down. So that hopefully will be done by late next year, and we'll be able to drive through that bypass without any stoplight if you're heading onto Vasco. So discuss that. Lots of good work. Thank you, council, for all the work that you're doing. My mayor's comments of two things. First off, I missed a civic and community event tomorrow night for those that are interested at 7:00 PM at the Antioch Community Center across from Deer Valley High School will have a State of the City event. It's free to attend, so it's 7:00. Our new chief of police will be speaking, Tammany Brooks, our new city manager, Ron Bernal, and I will be speaking as well. So it's 7:00, again, free to event. I've got a fly friend here. Sorry. But anyone who wants to attend, we'd love to see you tomorrow night at 7:00 for that event. We've had a few people, friends and important residents of Antioch pass away this past month. And I was called and said, you know, Sean, it'd be nice to close the meeting in their behalf. And I said, yeah, but if we close the meeting in their behalf, which I will do tonight, nobody's here at the end. And so I wanted to acknowledge these people for all that they do prior to that. We lost our past city treasurer, Jane Parsons, passed away. She did so much for this community, volunteering in so many different capacities through. Also, Dr. Howard Friesen, who was a longtime Antioch doctor and doctor to many members of our community, passed away in a tragic automobile accident this past week, or this past month. And we also lost Clark Gelhoffs, who was the owner of Solar Swim &amp; Gym. And getting to know him and all of the efforts that he and his wife put in, he taught many, many, many of our citizens how to swim, including my oldest daughter. And so he was a longtime resident of Antioch. Solar Swim &amp; Gym was actually built because two of our citizens died drowning in the delta. And so the community came together to build a community swim center to be able to make it safe. And so for so many years, Clark ran that swim center and taught many of us how to, so how to swim. So for those three individuals, and the last one I'd like to mention is the young 15-year-old young man who tragically lost his life just after graduation and an accidental death. So I'd like to recognize those members of our community and ask just for a moment of Yeah, we have one more civic and community event. I'll turn it over to Councilmember Ogerchak.
Thursday night at the community center is going to be, if Ms. Kaiser was here, she'd be up front sharing this information with us. The foodie truck, or trucks, will be out at the community center, and I believe it starts at 5:00, 6:00? I apologize. I don't know the exact time, and the internet's not working for me, so I couldn't pull it up. So if you go on to the city manager's site for the weekly reports, it was on last Friday. So make sure you come out and support the Thursday night foodie trucks. Thanks.
So there'll be music, entertainment going on, and opportunity for our community to come together, and that'll be across from Deer Valley at the community center if you'd like to participate. Thank you, Councilmember Ogerchak. Moving on to consent calendar. Are there any items that anyone on council wishes to pull from the consent calendar? Saying none, do I have a motion to accept the consent calendar? Motion by Councilmember Ogerchak. Do I have a second? Second by Councilmember Thorpe. Please cast your votes.
There are five affirmative votes.
Thank you. Moving to public hearing, a public hearing to confirm assessments for the Landscape Maintenance Distrikt 1, 2, 8, 4, 5, 9, and 10 for fiscal year 2017-2018. I'll turn it over to our city manager, Ron Bernal.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the city council. Lynn Filson will be making the staff report with support from Phil Hoffmeister on this
Thank you. Before you is the engineers' report for the streetlight and landscape maintenance districts. The report was presented to the council at the last meeting, so the public and city council have had a chance to review the report. Tonight, we're asking you to approve it. The lighting and landscape district brings in $2.16 million into the city for landscaping and lighting purposes. If you have any additional questions, we'd be happy to answer them. If not, we'd ask for your passing of the resolution.
This is a public hearing. Are there any public comments? I'll open the public hearing. Are there any public comments?
None received.
We will close this public hearing. This council, this item is now before council. Questions from council? Councilmember Tiscorino.
No, I'm ready to propose a motion. I think this is something that we have to do. We don't want to lose our landscaping and maintenance money. It's something that is tradition. The money comes in every budget cycle, right? So it behooves us to bring in this money. So I'm willing to make this motion. So I'm going to go ahead and say I recommend that the city council adopt the attached resolution ordering improvements in living annual assessments for Landscape Maintenance Distrikt 1, 2, 8, 4, 5, 9, and 10 for fiscal year 2017 and 2018.
We have a motion. Second by Councilmember Ogerchak. Any discussion? Councilmember Thorpe.
Lynn, just for people watching and in our audience, can you clarify that lining and landscaping, although we collect $2. something million, it's still supported by the general fund? And if you can explain that it's not just $2. something million that takes care of all of our lining and landscaping? Yes, that's correct. We collect that $2.1 million, but it costs a lot more to do the maintenance services. So our estimated cost for maintenance this next year is about $4.6 million. So the difference has to be made up in any leftover budgets we have as carryover and then the general fund contributions. Thank you. That's all I have.
If there are other questions or comments, we'll go ahead. Councilmember Ogerchak.
I do want to say thank you to staff for sending me the reports and helping me to understand this. As Mayor Protem Thorpe just indicated, that was the astounding part to me is just going over how much of the general fund pays for our lighting and landscaping in our parks. It's a huge amount. Thank you.
If there's nothing more, we'll call to a vote. Please cast your votes.
There are five affirmative votes.
Thank you. Moving on to the council regular agenda, item number three, designation of a voting delegate, an alternate delegate for the League of California Cities Annual Conference, and authorization for associated conference expenses not to exceed $1,400. I'll turn it over to city manager, Ron Bernal.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the city council, our administrative services director, Nikki Massdale, will make this report.
Good evening. What you have before you is a designation for council to appoint a voting delegate and alternate delegate for the 2017 League of California Cities Annual Conference, which takes place September 13 through 15. takes place September 13th through 15th, and also to authorize the associated conference expenses for one participant in amount not to exceed $1,400.
Thank you. I believe our delegate for the league is Councilmember Ogerchak, right? So I would put forward that our voting delegate be Councilmember Ogerchak. Do we have an alternate in case she cannot make it that would like to attend? Councilmember Wilson, are you willing to be our alternate in case Councilmember Ogerchak can't attend?
That's if my committee meets, then yeah, I'll definitely be down. If my committee doesn't meet, I mean, yeah, I'll be your alternate in case you can't make it.
Do we need to have a third voting delegate? It gives it on the...
Yeah, it's your option to have two, up to two.
So we'll put Councilmember Thorpe as our third voting delegate in that way to make sure we at least have one. Mayor? Councilmember Tiscorino?
I'll go ahead and move. Sure.
Councilmember Ogerchak?
I apologize for that. Since we're on this item and we're talking about the expenses, I will be on for another full year. I'm not asking to be the voting delegate. I understand that that has to come out each year, but I'm asking for the council to consider just giving me for my next convention, which would be next year, and my expenses added to this. Can we do that, please? So I don't have to keep coming back asking like we did in the consent calendar and we did already once this year. So it's the third time already this year, asking for expenses for me to go for the league. So there's three meetings that I go to. I don't go to Monterey. Is that all right?
Is that, since it wasn't on the agenda, can we add that to the agenda and vote on it? That would be my question.
Well, it's under consent also.
The agenda item only references the designation of a voting delegate, but it does reference an authorization for associated conference expenses not to exceed $1,400. And so I would interpret as long as we're not broaching, breaching that threshold of $1,400, then I would say it's appropriate because I think it's covered generally. But if we're exceeding that amount, then I think we would need to bring that back for a further meeting.
Through the mayor, may I ask you to look at item G also, which was already passed?
And I'll ask Councilmember Ogerchak, are you asking for additional money besides the $356 that's referenced in item G?
No, I'm asking for that to go to next year's, to be able to have these funds for next year also.
She's asking for preapproval for the same ones, conferences for next year?
I think that, I understand that, I think that might be, the best way to do that would to be bring that on to consent at the next meeting because technically the way the agenda reads, it's only referencing past expenses. And G is referencing the expenses for the meetings that Councilmember Ogerchak just attended. And then three is setting a cap at 1,400. So if we're out of, so if we're adding on to that, I think we should bring that back.
Okay. Thank you for clarifying.
Yeah.
So do we have a motion and a, we have, oh, we do not have a motion.
Do I need to read the motion completely here for the clerk's purposes here? Recommend that the City Council appoint a voting delegate and mayor alternate delegate, and we also have a third, right? For the 2017 League of California Cities Annual Conference, it is further recommended that the council authorize the association, associated conference expenses of one participant in an amount of not to exceed $1,400.
We have a motion, do we have a second? Second by Councilmember Thorpe.
Mr. Mayor, if you could have the maker of the motion a second and agree to list the voting member as Lori Ogerchak, the alternate as Monica Wilson, and the second alternate as Lamar Thorpe.
So move.
Second, okay with that? All right, we have a motion and a second. Please cast your votes.
And there are five affirmative votes.
Thank you. Moving on to item number four, receive a report and provide direction to staff regarding creation of senior mobile home housing overlay zoning district. I'll turn it over to City Manager Ron Bernal.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the City Council. Our City Attorney Derek Cole will be making this presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. This item is an informational item that seeks direction ultimately from the council on whether to proceed at all, and if so, what you would like to see. The subject is overlay zoning for mobile homes, senior overlay mobile homes. So several adjectives there, all strewn together and combined. But the gist is that there are some cities throughout the state that have used zoning to effectively prevent existing mobile home, senior mobile home parks from converting to all ages. And so in terms of terminology, when I say senior mobile home park, I'm referring to a mobile home park that is at least 80% occupied by senior residents, and those senior residents are 55 or older. So basically, the gist is that the city has the ability to use zoning to essentially prohibit existing senior mobile home parks from converting to all ages. By all ages, I mean there's no restriction, just as any subdivision allows anyone of any age to live in their subdivision. If it's not a senior subdivision, that's what effectively would happen if you don't have this type of zoning overlay district and the owners of an existing senior facility decide to convert to no longer limit their leasing activities to just seniors. It's sort of a complicated background. The legal issues, generally speaking, public agencies like the city have very broad powers. They're called the police power. Police obviously is not referring in this context to law enforcement, but the power to regulate health, safety, and welfare, and to regulate land, and do other types of things like that. That power is very broad, but federal and state law has limitations on a number of items, and that includes discrimination. You cannot, in the provision of housing, whether it's selling houses, renting houses, or lending and financing practices, engage in any type of prohibited discrimination. Obviously, you cannot discriminate based on race, religion, sexual orientation, sex, and a number of other protected classes, one of which is age. You cannot prohibit, discriminate based on one person's age. And another is familial status. You cannot, for instance, if you're a rental property, you cannot prohibit, or you cannot not rent to someone because they have children, or because they have small children. That's one example. Or you cannot limit housing to just sort of the nuclear family, you know, parents and kids. You can't stop cousins, or uncles, or aunts, or grandparents, or people of father kinship but part of the family from living together. Federal law and state law very clearly prohibit that practice. On its face, when you have limitations on age, like senior housing, you are technically drawing a line based on familial status. When you say only seniors who are 55 and older can live in this community, you are technically saying that families with kids and other types of familial arrangements cannot live there. And on its face, that would qualify as discrimination under federal law. But I think, as many of us understand, protection of people who are elderly, people who are advanced in age, is not the same thing as telling people who have kids, or telling people who want to live with cousins, or aunts, or uncles, that they can't live together. It's something very, very different. And in fact, I think we want to encourage senior communities. We want to bring people in that stage of their life together and to offer them special housing because often people in that situation may not have the same means. They're beyond their working years, or they're retired, they're on fixed incomes. And so for a lot of reasons, federal law was changed in the late 80s to explicitly say that if you rent or you engage in a housing practice that is intended to benefit seniors, that is not discrimination, that is not prohibited discrimination. A lot of housing establishments, communities, apartment complexes, mobile home parks, were already engaging in the practice of renting to seniors, or leasing or selling to seniors. But there was a legal question, is that technically a violation of our anti-discrimination laws, or is it not? The federal Congress essentially changed that law in the late 80s. And so they said, you may expressly allow a senior-only community. And by that, they defined seniors to mean people 55 and older and comprising 80% of a complex, or a property, or a unit, or, you know, a mobile home park, or something along those lines. And so that law was changed. And traditionally, it was thought, well, we want to let the owners, the proprietors of these facilities voluntarily engage in this type of arrangement. That's how it started. But then a number of cities, after the federal law change, realized that there were, you know, sort of the reverse was happening. Initially, communities were starting to develop senior-only communities, and then as that trend had sort of gained some steam, a number of communities were starting to go back from being senior-only. They were starting to go to all-ages facilities. And for whatever reasons, presumably the disruption that that caused on senior populations, the special needs of senior populations, the financial impacts of displacement on them, having to move mobile homes, for instance, as I understand, is not exactly a cheap endeavor, especially if you are already on a fixed income and you don't have, you know, gobs of discretionary cash sitting around. And so a number of cities started using the exception in the anti-discrimination laws as essentially a grant of a type of zoning. And so they started creating overlay zones. And there are a number of cities now that actually prohibit the establishments that were senior-only establishments from converting to all-ages facilities. And so ultimately, what I've described in my staff report is the legal background for doing that. There are a number of issues I've laid out on my staff report, and I'll be happy to answer any questions. But really, as I understand, this is a policy sort of workshop-like presentation from me to you. And then I understand there are a number of interested members of the public here tonight who are, who will be providing input to you. Ultimately, I feel like I've covered the legal issues well enough in the staff report. I'm certainly happy to answer any questions. Really, the question tonight is, do you want to direct me and/or your planning staff to take any action? And I've outlined some of the basics of what we could do and what kind of timeframe. But ultimately, this would be the creation of a zoning district and then the creation of maps. We would have to identify properties that we could actually put into the zone. And as I indicate, there's some legal issues that we'd really have to look into. I will stress that we have not looked into what this would actually look like, what properties could or should be included, or whether we can meet the requirements for including them. I've simply tried to paint with a very broad brush and outline the phenomenon, outline what can be done. But I do think that I would need to work with your staff to really understand the logistics, what the existing mobile home park compositions are, how many of them there are, where they are, what their existing zoning is, and what the impacts would be if we were to enter into this type of zoning arrangement in this city. So all of this is to say that what you have tonight is very preliminary and is really meant to provoke discussion and allow members of the public to provide input. And then, once that's all done, we would be happy to receive direction and bring something back if that's your pleasure.
Thank you. I believe we have public comments on this item.
Yep. And Mr. Mayor, up on the dais and in the back room for the public and for staff is a copy of an email that was received this afternoon from Deborah McKinney, Director of Operations here, Corporate Management of Anaheim, California, regarding this item.
Should I read this email?
Pardon?
Should I read this email?
If you wish.
The email is from Debbie McKinney. Sharon, our company president is away on vacation, so I'm going to send you this email with just some basic thoughts. We are disappointed that we were not notified of this meeting. We certainly would have been there if we had known. We know that the subsidy is ending for the seniors in October of this year, and we want our options to be open as to whether we stay a senior park or turn to a family park. We would object to the change because it would limit us Title 25 in the MRL Guide as to any change in status of the park, and we will follow that guidance. Lola Buck followed by Al Ives.
Good evening, Mayor Wright, council members, City Manager and City Attorney. My name is Lola Buck. I'm president of the Vista Diablo Mobile Home Association, homeowners association, sorry. I have been a homeowner in Vista Diablo for 21 years. I, like my friends and neighbors at the park, moved there because it was a senior park, 55-plus. There are 150 homes in our community. We own our homes and we pay rent on the space. Not all of the homeowner residents could attend the meeting tonight. We drafted a letter to you from the residents asking for your support. You have copies of the petition that we have for you. We are here tonight to ask for your help. The agreement that was entered into in 2007 will expire October 7th, 2017. We need, we need your assistance. I'm sorry, I lost my place. Because at the time, in 2007, we were threatened with this very thing of being turned into a family park, and also that the increase of rents. And so that's when we asked for the city help. And the agreement was entered into, and the subsidy, and it's in your staff report. But now it's expiring, and our fear is that, and it's a very real fear of the climate that's in the park right now, that it will, they will try to convert it to an all-age park. We have, our rents are the highest in Costa County, the highest of the mobile home parks. And we, and we have other homeowners and residents that will be addressing the lack of maintenance by the owners of the park, the increasing rents, and due to the increasing monthly rents, the decrease in equity of our homes. Some of the California cities have the senior mobile home overlay and have been challenged in court, and the cities have won. I would just like for just a show of hands of the residents that are here tonight?
Yeah.
Yes. Okay, so I urge you to vote yes to the creation of the senior mobile home housing overlay zoning ordinance. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Al Ives, followed by Jerry Coffel.
Is it on? Good evening, Mr. Mayor, and members of the council, and our City Manager, Mr. Bernal, and also our City Attorney, Mr. Coles. My name's Alan Ives, and in September, I'll be a 23-year resident, a homeowner in the Vista Diablo Mobile Home Park. I'm also a 66-year out of the last 71 resident of Antioch. I'm a geezer, I've been around a while. I serve on the homeowners' association board of directors and also on the association's action committee, which was formed to protect and maintain our status as a 55-plus-years senior community. First, I'd like to say that our style of living is very unique. We're homeowners who happen to rent or lease other people's real property to place our property, to place our homes on. Many years ago, the legislature recognized this unique type of homeownership. We have a big investment in these properties also, and they wrote a law to govern it. It's called the... It's called the Mobile Home Residency Law, Chapter 2.5 of the California Civil Code. And in this law, however, there's a provision that allows park owners, in our case, the Court &amp; Scott Group, a Southern California triple R company, rich, ruthless, and revolting, to change us to an all-age family park if they so choose to do so. And the procedure is, it's not in our lease, believe it or not. We have about 30-page leases and 35-page rules and regulations. But it's not in the lease, it's in the rules and regulations which can be amended. You can't amend the contract unilaterally, but you can amend the regulations, and they have to give us a 10-day notice that there's going to be a meeting, and let us know what the meeting is about and what rules and regs they're going to be amending. And then, hold the meeting, consult with us only at the meeting, and then go ahead and do it within six months if we don't agree to it at that time. So, they can do that without our approval, just they have to meet with us, confer, basically, but they don't have to agree to anything. So, that's where we are, and that. And then, in 2000, excuse me, I had something else here that I wrote in, and I can't read what I'm supposed to be writing here. Oh, okay, yes. In 2007, they decided to do exactly that. And Mayor Don Freitas, Mayor Pro Tem Jim Davis, and council members Brian Kalanowski, Reggie Moore, and right over there, they didn't want that to happen. And they decided to play hardball and let Court &amp; Scott know that if they didn't agree to let us retain our senior park status for 10 years, the council would enact a mobile home rent control ordinance. And Court &amp; Scott signed the agreement, drawn up by City Attorney Lynn Nerlin. And the agreement also had several other smaller items in it. So, here we are today, less than four months away from that agreement ending, asking you to keep that protection for our 150-plus homeowners by enacting a senior overlay ordinance that doesn't expire and can only be changed locally by you and us if we want to talk to you about it, not somebody in Sacramento to get the law changed.
Al, your time is up. We need to move to the next speaker. You are fabulous. Jerry Coffel, followed by Carrie Lee Shames.
Good morning, good morning. Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Thank you for letting me come to speak before you. My name is Jerry Coffel, and I've lived in Vista Diablo since 2000. Just a quick little background on me, because it'll help. I have been an administrator for a city of the size of Antioch in my background, a city planner for Oakland for 10 years, and a real estate broker who's managed two senior developments. And I don't do, I do know seniors have a lot of extra time, and they can cause a lot of trouble. Right now, I'm the president of Chapter 1461 of the Golden State Mobile Home Manufacturers League, created only in January. When we became aware of this, that the senior overlay zoning was our best option, I asked for assistance from the state GSML organization and chapters. The response was overwhelming. We got lots of advice, testimony, and numerous documents. And from that, that's how we crafted the document that we sent to you. And we did that with in mind that it would be not, would be clear and concise and very useful to you, so you didn't have to go through a lot of waiting. The first part was to assure you about that it's legal. The second was a clear path, which the city of Huntington Beach had done. And the third was to show you 22 other cities are doing this. I think we have to call this Sierra Property Management Company and Court &amp; Scott what they are. They're really slum lards, you know? They did not buy Vista Diablo Mobile Home to come and be a business community participant here. They came here to buy the park, degrade it, take as much money out of it as possible, refinance it so they could take even more money out of it. It seems to me they're taking about $100,000 a month out of our park, and that's over $1 million a year. Over nine years of the agreement, that's $9 million. That's not money circulating in the park. Their MO is to buy a senior park, flush the seniors out, and I think that's what it is, to flush the seniors, and that needs to stop. What happens is, they don't reinvest in the park, and the park deteriorates. And that's what's been going on. You'll hear a lot about that later. What I want you to know is, we, in our chapter, we've been busy schooling ourselves in learning what the parking rules regulations are, what the Mobile Home Residency Law is, and even Section 25 of the state law. We can't do this alone. We need your help. I think I'd ask you really to pass this senior overlay and help us out, because we're trying to clean up like 10 years of mismanagement. So, I hope you will support us. Thank you.
Thank you. Carrie Lee Shames, followed by Gil Davis.
Hi there. I'm from the statewide organization, GSML, which has been around since 1962, helping support people who buy manufactured housing, because our laws are so unique. We do exist in this kind of netherland where nobody else lives. We own our homes. We bought them. Some people in this audience paid $200,000, not as much as a stick home, but a lot of money, and invested in it with the promise that this is where they wanted to live for the rest of their life. So, by the addition of this senior overlay, and we have plenty of resources, we'd be happy to help you as a statewide organization. We've been helping other groups to do this, because we have so many seriously predatory park owners who do come in just to buy this and turn it around and make a lot of money. Meanwhile, you've got all these seniors who are trying to figure out where they're going to live, and they figured that out 20 years ago. And now, they have to do that again, because the park owners are trying to break their commitment to keep this as a senior park, which is what they bought into. So, as far as moving houses, somebody mentioned that? Don't even think about it. Most of the houses are so old that it would cost $20,000, $30,000 to try and move it. There are no spaces anywhere to put them anymore. There's nowhere to go, because there's no more housing opportunities. So, we need to keep our homes. We invested in them, and we're asking you to help protect that investment. For every dollar that the park owners put in, we put in too. We fix our roofs, we fix our gas stoves, we fix everything that breaks. Unlike regular renters, we're not renters. We're leasing land and own the homes. And we're asking to keep them for seniors, because these people have developed a community together. They live together, and they don't want a bunch of noisy kids and all the problems that children bring to parks. It makes people's insurance go up higher, and that's not their fault. They don't even want it. But having kids brings a whole nother element, and we just ask you to please consider this. It doesn't mean you cannot convert it, it just makes it a little more difficult. Anything you can do to help all these seniors would be greatly appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you. Gil Davis, followed by Vivian Espinoza.
Hello, Mayor Wright, and the members of the city council. My name is Gil Davis. My wife Shirley and I live at 62 Leo Lane in Vista Diablo Senior Mobile Home Park. When we moved in in April of 2004, the selling prices ranged from approximately $70,000 to $120,000. We were able to buy a very nice home for approximately $80,000. A few years later, as the space rents began to climb, many seniors living on a fixed income had a hard time making the rent increases. Some were forced to sell their homes for that reason. Some sold their homes at a loss, while others had to simply just walk away entirely. I believe some moved their homes out of the park, leaving some open spaces. The park obtained some of those homes, plus they brought in a few older mobile homes and began selling them cheaply. Sold, some sold at $5,000, $8,000, $12,000, or less. This, in turn, caused the value of our homes to depreciate more quickly than normal. Homes are now selling between $20,000 and $30,000, and the space rent continues to climb. Homes across the street at Chateau Motel Mobile Home Park are selling for $89,000 and up. Their space rent is very much less than the over $1,300 per month that I pay. We all have lost value in our homes. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you in this regard.
Thank you. Vivian Espinoza, followed by Larry Espinoza.
My name is Vivian Espinoza. I'm the secretary-treasurer of GSML Chapter 1461 here in Antioch, and I live in Vista Diablo Mobile Home Park. I would like to thank you for the consideration for the senior park overlay district ordinance for our city. This park was advertised as a senior park. Our seniors have expressed concerns that their lifestyle will be disrupted if families and younger people become residents. Senior parks have much lower maintenance. With family parks, the overall park quality goes down, vandalism, crime, and maintenance intensifies. Another concern is that rents in the park would increase because people with higher incomes would move in as opposed to seniors on fixed incomes. Information regarding Court &amp; Scott Financial Group, the owners, they have breached the California Code of Regulations Title 25 a total of 21 times, the California Health and Safety Codes 11 times, California Civil Code, CIV, 2 times. They have violated the provisions of the California Mobile Residency Law, MRL, at least 31 times. They have engaged and are engaging in unlawful and unfair business practices. They offered rent reductions to prospective park tenants to entice them into long-term lease agreements that would be exempt from rent control ordinances. This practice violates the MRL Civil Code 798.1D. Lease agreement conditions and requirements violated various provisions of the MRL, including conditions which expressly resulted in waivers of rights of violation of Civil Code 798.19. The state of California won an injunction against Court &amp; Scott Companies. Thursday, September 29, 2016, on March 19, 2015, the East Davis County Fire Protection District announced that a task force of nine was being formed to investigate the questionable business practices of Sierra Corporate Management. On Friday, March 25, 2016, the people of state of California plaintiff filed a complaint for an injunction, civil penalties, and other equitable relief against Davis Group, Sierra Corporate Management Incorporated, Western Ventures, and Abraham Aragati. In August 2, 2016, the people of the state of California won a final judgment and obtained an injunction against them. You well make the right decision to protect the senior homeowners and indirectly save risks and liability for the park owners, the homeowners, and the city. Thank you so much for your concerns for this vulnerable group of citizens in your city.
Thank you. Larry Espinoza, followed by Don Wise.
Mr. Mayor, and honorable members of the city council, I wish to thank you for the opportunity to, and apologize for the necessity to speak before you. My name is Larry Espinoza. I am vice president of the GSML Chapter 1461 at Vista Diablo Mobile Home Estates. I am retired mechanical design engineer and a veteran of the Vietnam era in the 82nd Airborne. Court &amp; Scott have engaged in elder abuse in many forms, emotional, financial, exorbitant high rents, substandard maintenance, falsehoods, lies, equity loss at Vista Diablo Mobile Home Estates. This due to the questionable business practices. They have used scare tactics to force signatures to long-term leases, stating that they could not guarantee set increases if we did not sign them, which later became detrimental to the homeowner. The rent increases forced homeowners out of their homes, and as you can tell from other information we have provided you, reduced our home equity. These actions caused a homeowner to lose all, and for Court &amp; Scott to take possession, in effect, getting a profit at both ends, while virtually stealing from the individual homeowner. I commented to management that the retaining wall behind my trailer was coming apart, and I was told by them that it was my responsibility to fix that. Now, as it turns out, it was not. Information coming from the HCD showed it was the park's responsibility, so I was lied to. Many residents have had water meters replaced due to leaks and broken pipes. In order to repair or replace these features, water in the park and shut-off valves to the leaks to service complete this, I'm sorry, I lost my place. This, they replaced due to leaks and broken pipes. In order to repair or replace these features, water to the entire park is shut off until the leak or service is completed. This is unacceptable, as it puts the entire park at extreme risk, largely due to the fact that many shut-off valves are frozen and/or are inoperable. Trees have gone untrimmed, branches have fallen on vehicles with self-evident results. Court &amp; Scott has failed to meet the original agreement that was signed by them and the city of Antioch. Mayor Freitas was witness to the original agreement. Thank you.
Thank you, Larry. Don Wise, followed by Stephanie McIntosh.
I had actually signed up to speak on item six.
It does say item six. Stephanie McIntosh, followed by Jim. Come on, Jim. Buna, you know who you are.
Good evening, honorable mayor and city council members, and city manager and city attorney. My name is Stephanie McIntosh, and I live at Vista Diablo Mobile Home Park. I bought my home 13 years ago because it was in a senior park with a senior community lifestyle. I found it to be a nice, safe, quiet place to live, and I thought it would remain that way. I enjoy taking walks within the park and attending a zumba class at the clubhouse, where there are other activities as well. I am on the Board of Directors of our Golden State Manufactured Homeowners League chapter in our park. I enjoy the camaraderie of other seniors in the park. It is a totally different lifestyle than renting and living in an apartment. We pay rent on our space, but we take pride in owning our homes. I'm on a fixed income and could not afford to buy a house or condo in the regular housing market. I've heard there is a waiting list for affordable senior housing in Antioch, and that would most likely be apartment living. Living in Vista Diablo means I am close to family, shopping, 24-hour fitness, Kaiser Delta Fair, et cetera. It is a good place to live. If this becomes a family park, I would lose the peace and quiet that comes with living in the seniors-only mobile home park where I feel quite safe, walking at any time of day or night. I'm afraid many seniors would sail, and our senior community would be gone. I don't know where else to live out my retirement years. Please enact a senior overlay zoning ordinance, as other California cities have done, to protect the safety and welfare of senior citizens who are a special needs group and would like to remain in their homes. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Jim B., followed by Rosemary Marino.
Thank you, guys. I'm honored to be here. Just got a few comments. I didn't know, Jerry informed us that we were, we were flushed. He said we were being flushed, and I definitely agree with him. The new management they have in the park are the most hardball management we've ever seen. They give us seven days for cleaning up our yard, and then, if we They give us seven days for cleaning up our yard, and then if we don't get it cleaned up in seven... Anything we do, anything in the thirty pages, we give a seven-day notice, and if it's not done, we lose our home. So that seemed like a threat to me. Unfortunately, I believed it. They threatened us... They informed us that there was an organization that was going to come around and inspect the park, and if this organization found anything wrong, we were going to get fine money. It was a complete lie. Everything... They say that they're there to provide care for the common area and... They do nothing. They tore up two lots, three lots, 10 years ago to put mobile homes in. It didn't come through. They leave the lot. There's actually a... Don't get excited. There was actually a hole in the street left for 10 years with some signs on it. Well, and they follow none of their own rules. The idea that the homes that they brought in were, according to them, the only homes you could bring in was a new one. They had to expect it. They expected everything on it. Instead, they dragged in these old aluminum-sided mobile homes. They said the roofs have to have... Can't have foam on them. The roofs that came in had foam on them. And they left it up to the people who bought it to get it in shape. I think that's about it. Well, one other issue on the back page, on flushed. So they told me something had to be done in seven days. I had to have my RV out of there in seven days, and unfortunately, I believed them. So in seven days, I had to get the RV out of there, and no junkyard just takes it. You have to fix it up, or they don't take a RV. Same time, I had to get another RV to put it in, to put my stuff in. No one else in the parking lot... Oops. Had to do that. I had to do it. That was it. So I feel like I got flushed because I went to the hospital with a hernia, which I got from being old and, you know, working so hard. That's it. Thanks, guys.
Thank you. Rosemarie Moreno, followed by L. Emil Corrigan.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council Members. My name is Rosemarie Moreno. I've been a five-year resident of Vista Diablo. I've had two very serious incidences in the past with minors that are living in the park. My first incident was with two teenage boys on electric scooters. I was entering the park, and out of the bushes came a boy on his scooter. I put my brake on so hard, my dog landed from the backseat to the front. I rolled down my window, and I said to the boy, "I almost hit you." He said very rudely, "I live here, and there's nothing you can do about it." My second incident, I was coming from the office in our park, coming around my street to get to my carport, and there was a woman waving her arms at me to stop, and there was a little boy on a scooter about 10 feet from me. I didn't see him. She said, "I'm teaching him how to ride." My next-door neighbors bought an electric car for their two little boys, and they were out in the street, riding. And I said, "Somebody's going to turn you in." Well, they got rid of the car. When I moved here five years ago, I had to sign a contract stating that I would be living in a 55-plus community with no children. In other words, me bringing in children. All we have are streets and carports, and there are kids everywhere. Please help us keep this park a senior park. Thank you.
Thank you. L. Emil Corrigan, followed by Kip Stevens.
Good evening, Antioch City officials. My name is Emmett Corrigan. I'm a 74-year-old senior, and I have been a Vista Diablo resident for nine years. More than 20 years ago, my wife, Shawan, and I, while living in a small rent-controlled apartment in San Francisco, brought my elderly parents from the East Coast to live with us. We took care of them until their deaths at the ages of 88 and 92. Then, nine years ago, my wife's mother had a heart attack while living at Vista Diablo. We decided to move in with her and assist her in her lengthy recovery. She died last year at the age of 92. It was an honor and a gift to live with both of our parents in their final years. And now, my wife, who has health problems, and I, our seniors ourselves, we have come to view Vista Diablo not just as a group of houses in close proximity, but rather as a community of trust and protection. There is a common bond that develops among people that have something in common. In our case, that bond is age. Neighbors become friends who look out for each other and help to stave off loneliness with camaraderie. Since many of us are on low fixed incomes, there is a great anxiety among Vista Diablo seniors trying to survive on low incomes in the brutally expensive Bay Area. Council members, we seniors want to eliminate the perception that we are directly opposed to the families that are recently moved into Vista Diablo. We empathize with their place. However, the term "family" itself assumes that there are multiple members who are presumably younger, healthier, and with the ability to earn multiple incomes. We seniors are vulnerable and fearful of a future in the current state of a volatile American landscape. There is one thing that every single person in this room tonight shares. We all have had parents and grandparents, and we all grow old eventually. We ask this council to consider saving at least one place in Antioch that allows for some tranquility, dignity, and hope. I thank you for listening.
Thank you. Kip Stevens.
Good evening, Council. Let's put it this way. I grew up in a mobile home park that was 55 and older, and we put a lot of emphasis on me staying there. And if you look around, this is a real close community. This is our rock. We respect our elders as growing up. And I came here to see the meeting tonight, and I see all these people that are really passionate about living at their place. And once again, the gentleman before me said they are on a fixed income. Where are they going to go? Think about it. Is that your mom out there? Where are they going to go? And I totally understand this, and this has kind of hit home. Like I said, I grew up in one of these mobile home parks, but I did a lot of work for the elderly, and I didn't ask for any money, but they gave us food. That's how I got so big. Just... I thought I'd come up here and give a little positive. Give a little positive. You know, I look around and see everybody comes together, and they're all from this... You know, and when they raised their hand, I was blown away. I was like, "This is close." You know, what they're asking for is not much. It sounds like a typical case of a slumlord that wants to take advantage of the elderly. And I think we should reach out and help these people because they are a close community. If you've ever been in a mobile home park, bingo's off the hook. You know, craft classes are off the hook. They come together. And the last thing you want to see is the youngsters come in and disrupt their mojo, you know? And I see the passion that these guys have. I can keep going on. I just hope we reach out and help them. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Questions or comments from City Council Members? Council Member Thorpe.
I just had a quick question. This... The October 9th agreement, when does that officially expire? Did it expire already?
October 9th of this year, yeah. So we're coming up on expiration.
So that... I was only confused because I heard people say that there are children living there, so I was under the impression that perhaps that this agreement had expired, so they started allowing families to move in. But that hasn't taken place yet. Oh, okay. Okay, thank you. And my last question is, and I appreciate the comments. We get a lot of people who come and comment, and they tell us what we should be doing, but they never offer... Sometimes they don't offer things to consider, so I appreciate you, L., for pointing out something that... He mentioned that previously that the City Council had considered a senior overlay zoning that included some aspect of rent control.
That is something that can be included in... I mean, that rent control is a little bit different than the overlay zoning. The overlay zoning would essentially restrict the mobile home park to being senior-only. The agreement that is part of your packet that was negotiated by your former council members and my predecessor is more of a rent control. It sort of did both. It limited the park to senior-only, but it also sort of threatened the idea that we would bring a rent control ordinance back. I think at that time, the landscape, the legal landscape was a little different. You didn't have the overlay zoning the way you did now, and so the tool that we could use to address the situation is the overlay zoning. Rent control is another tool that could be looked at as well. That really wasn't the subject of my presentation tonight, but I... It's possibly on the table as well.
Okay, I hope so. And I'll just add... I'll just add that... That this city has not done a very good job of balancing senior housing with market-rate housing, and so I certainly support the efforts that are taking place here because we got to preserve and make sure that we still... We have that senior housing is accommodated in the City of Antioch, and we need to do a better job of it. So anything I can do to support that, I'm certainly supportive.
Council Member Tiscorino.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mayor Protem Lamarthorpe touched on it, and it was one of the questions I was going to ask. You had a previous council that understood your passion and understood what you were going through. And I'm looking at a previous council member right here right in front of me, so he's nodding his head. They did the right thing at that time. I truly believe that. I just only hope that they should have did what I think we're trying to possibly get accomplished now, back then, so you wouldn't have to be here other than maybe enjoy our council. But again, you know, I have all due respect for, you know, our seniors out here. It's always been something that I've had a passion for. I think all of us in that council, I think, feel the same way for our seniors. But again, you know, the question I was going to present to City Attorney was, you know, there was a past practice that was initiated by a previous council. You know, I'm one of those that supports certain past-practice measures. And I don't know if it's a legal thing or not, but it's always a good thing to follow. And the question I have is, does past practice have any kind of, you know, strength to it or from a previous policy?
Well, that, you know, obviously, this is something that when I became City Attorney, your former City Attorney briefed me that this was an issue that was popping up, and he had done a little work on it. And so we had a schedule for this to be on tonight, and so really, I'm coming up to speed on this and understanding now the issues. So really, there's the issue, the policy issue of having a mobile home overlay zone, but there's also the fact that your predecessor, two predecessors ago, negotiated an agreement with the mobile home park. It may be that that is something we could turn to and say, "Listen, you know, you have citizens that have approached the City Council about an ordinance. We can bring that forward. We can address that, but is there some room to renegotiate this or extend this agreement that if the council would like me to do that, I would be more than happy to reach out?" So I'm seeing some differences of opinion there, so I would defer to you as far as what you'd like me to do.
No, my question was, at that time, you know, there was a decision made. You know, I want to make sure that, you know, we are protecting the folks out there, and if this is the measure that we have to abide by doing or progressing with some type of overlay, you know, I'm willing to move forward that as a personal vote. So my mind thinking at that time was, I believed that a previous city council was trying to do the right thing, to protect you. And they set somewhat of a precedent. And so if we can entertain anything that aids us from that and further by strengthening what we can do here, you know, I think you have my ears on this. So I just want to make sure that, you know, we're doing what we can from a legal aspect and not get us out in trouble. I don't think we are. You know, again, I would refer to you. I mean, it was one of the public comments stated that, you know, other cities have moved on with this, and they've gone through the legal process and prevailed. So I'm assuming that that's true, and I'm assuming that the City of Antioch can do the same thing. So I just wanted to assure you that, you know, I'm here with you as well, so just want to make sure that we get this done.
Council Member Ogerchak.
Council Member Wilson has her finger on the button also, just so you know. I have a few things because I've been doing a little bit of research on this. This park, if I understand it correctly, was built in 1978. There was three parks. There's three parks within the city. Two of them are 55-plus, and the other one's out off 18th Street by the... But there's only 78 units, I believe, in that one. There is. But this one with 158, since the inception, it was a senior mobile home park? Is that correct? Okay. So I want to give a little bit of history so people understand that this park was built for the seniors at the time that it was built. The one that's on Buchanan Road converted, and I want to say that was over 10 years ago, that it converted to a family park. The speakers were correct. I'm very impressed with the speakers tonight, so thank you. You've done your job well. There is a two-plus year current waiting for senior housing. Our city is lacking. Mayor Protem is correct, and we are working diligently on that and with Tabor Gardens going in. I understand that you don't want to move, and I don't blame you. The senior park was noted that the park conversion was six months or less. This is not enough time. So the timeframe that I'm talking about, it's not enough time for you to move. You were only given like a six-month notice that this was coming up, is basically what I'm saying. So you haven't had enough time to do enough research to even move if you wanted to move. The City Attorney is correct in looking at the cost to move your mobile homes, if they're even movable, is the cost is just ungodly. So that, to me, is not even an option. So, and on top of it, 78 of the occupants within the senior home has received a subsidy from the City of Antioch. But that subsidy also expires at the end of September of this year. So there are some major concerns with all of this. And, you know, it's an environment, and the City Attorney addressed it, and so do a lot of you. This is an environment that you want to stay in. So in reading this and the paperwork, thank you to the City Attorney for the work that you've done on this. If, as a council, I would ask that this council, due to the time restraints that we have on this, that we adopt it as an urgency ordinance moratorium. And then, I agree with Mayor Protem Thorpe, we do need to look at the rent control. I know several people in that home, in that mobile home park, that have had to move because they could no longer afford the space rent. And I have seen for myself, being out there, some of the things that you're talking about, the things that aren't being done, that's in your contract that's supposed to be being done. So I understand, and I'm appalled tonight, I have to share with you, that I'm hearing that there are people under the age of 55 living in there. I understand they can come for a week, so let's make sure it's not a grandchild coming for a week and staying for a week. I know, I know. I'm just throwing it out there. So due to the time restraints, I personally, I know Council Member Wilson would like to add, but I have a fear of these time restraints, and these things just don't happen at our next meeting. We're off at the end... We're off at the end of July. If the council is serious about considering this, again, I would urge us to move this forward with an urgency item and get this done as quickly as we possibly can. Thank you.
Councilmember Wilson.
Basically, Councilmember Ogerchak addressed what I was getting ready to ask, if the, if our city attorney has the time to do this, because I, I see your passion, like you guys have packed, you definitely have come and packed this crap, you know, packed the audience tonight. I'm also appalled by some of the conditions I'm hearing going on. I'm really, I'm really curious, and I know there was somebody here from the state organization who, I'm just really curious, who regulates this industry to make, to take care of, you know, practices? So, you know, we need to make, make sure we keep on that. But getting back to my original thought, I don't want to do a 10-year moratorium, I want to protect them. I don't want, I don't want you guys or somebody else to come back 10 years from now and go through this process. Let's do this overlay. I'm curious that how much time do we need to make this happen? If we need to do the urgency, you know, the urgency ordinance, I'm, I'm, I'm ready to vote for that tonight, but I want to make sure that you guys are all taken care of. And also who do I, who do we need to call to, to, to make sure regulations are being followed? Because it does sound like you have a slumlord from some of these things I'm hearing. But definitely if we can make this happen tonight to protect you guys, because I don't want to come back, well, we don't, I don't want to see this come back 10 years and we're going through it over again, because I'm, I'm assuming in 2007, you guys wanted this permanent and we wouldn't be here today. So whatever we can do to make it happen.
And Mr. Mayor, members of the council, the point of order, the urgency ordinance we'd have to draft and bring back to you, it's effective immediately. So the moment, unlike the 30-day waiting period, the urgency ordinance takes effect immediately, we would have to extend it within 45 days and then we have the right to extend it up to two years. The idea behind the urgency ordinance is to give us room to study the issue. So it's considered to be a temporary regulation. It could be a prohibition so that we give immediate relief to the members of the, the mobile home park so that they have some assurance immediately that they're not going to be, you know, kicked out of the park, basically. And then we can put permanent regulations, including perhaps rent control ordinance, in effect. I will say that from a drafting standpoint, the agenda turnaround for our next meeting is pretty quickly. And your next meeting has the budget, I believe, as well as a controversial code enforcement matter that was placed on the board or on the council agenda very recently. So my suggestion is that I can have a full ordinance at your first meeting in July that's still three months ahead of the deadline that the individuals of the mobile home park are facing. If there's any cleanup issues you want, you have at least two more meetings, three more meetings, so that you could, you know, tell me to bring it back if you need it. I think that gives you enough time and that gives the folks here enough time. And most importantly, I, you know, as your lawyer, I want to get this right. I, I, you know, I can foresee other, you know, objections and other things and I want to have some time to build some defenses for that. So that, that is a, if, if it is the pleasure of the council to move forward with something, I would suggest that you give me until the first meeting in July to bring an ordinance, an urgency ordinance back.
Council, I think, I think you've heard loud and clear from council
Yeah.
that we would like to move forward with an overlay. I, I think. What, the urgency ordinance seems to only be needed if we're not going to get that done by October. We would then go forward with an urgency ordinance to make sure that we have time to finish whatever we're doing.
My concern is that if we do it as a regular ordinance, it's a zoning ordinance, so we have to refer it first to the planning commission, do a public hearing notice, then we have to do an additional public hearing notice after the planning commission to bring it to the council, then we have to wait 30 days. And so you're, you're moving at a dead run and there's really no ability to continue. If, if the planning commission says, well, we want to bring this back to our next meeting and they continued a couple times, that just.
So is your plan then in July to bring us an urgency ordinance to put the moratorium to make sure that that goes forward?
Yes.
Then we can work on the overlay district and that can take whatever time it's going to take.
Well, yes, and then we can refer, it's somewhat like the marijuana ordinance that you have. We have, we're in our moratorium period right now. That'll, you know, we'll, we'll have something in by November. So that's exactly what we would do. And we would refer it to the planning commission and we could develop a, a permanent ordinance.
Now, from the standpoint of the, the rent control, look at rent control on this property, is that in conjunction with the overlay district or is that a separate, separate discussion that goes along with?
That, that would most likely be separate. I mean, they might affect the same property, but there, there's two different legal foundations and procedures for those.
Okay. Well. Thank, thank you. So we will, this, I think you've heard direction. Thank you for coming tonight. Don Freitas, I sat down with our former mayor who, who worked with you 10 years ago and, and sat down with your board. And one of the things that Don said to me, he said, Sean, in the eight years I was mayor, he says, the decision I made on that property was one of the proudest things that I did. And I think. So you have a supportive council and we will go forward in the proper steps to make sure that we protect and, and move forward. Anything else? Mr. Cole?
No.
All right.
Can we just need a motion to receive and file?
Do I have a motion to receive and file? Moved by Councilmember Ogerchak, seconded by Councilmember Thorpe. Please cast your votes.
I hit the button too soon. Can you revote, please?
Please revote.
There are five affirmative votes.
Thank you.
Moving on to item number five, review and discuss city council appointment of the Eastern Contra Costa Transit Authority Tri Delta Board of Directors. Turn it over to city manager, Rob Bernall.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the city council. This item is for the city council to appoint a replacement board member for former council member Mary Rocha to the Tri Delta Board of Directors for the remainder of her term as vice chair. Her term will expire in July of 2017. And this item's for city council discussion and approval for a place, replacement board member.
Discussion? Councilmember Ogerchak, make a motion, please.
So I may make a motion, the city council review and approve Mayor Wright's appointment of Mayor Pro Tim Thorpe to the Eastern Contra Costa Transit Authority Tri Delta Board of Directors.
We have a motion, do we have a second? Second by Councilmember Wilson. Please, please cast your votes.
Tiscorino and Ogerchak.
One more vote?
There we go.
There we go.
There are five affirmative votes.
Thank you. Moving on to item number six, second reading community choice aggregation program. Turn it over to city manager, Rob Bernall.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the city council. This item, which will be the second reading of the ordinance about the implementation of a community choice aggregate program and approval of MCE joint power agreement is one option the council might have or to take no action, thereby making no change to the current electrical provider arrangement for power for the city of Antioch. And Julie Hazway-Dovitch will be making the staff report on this.
And Mr. Mayor and staff, there are several items that were presented prior to the meeting. There's a letter from, signed by Supervisor Pedal Glover and also by Diane Burgess. There are eight cards that were submitted by members of the Sierra Club. The eight cards were signed by five people. There was also one other item that was passed out. It just says listed as CCA slash clean energy and didn't provide any further information as who provided it.
Thank you. I'll turn it over to Julie.
Good evening, Mayor Wright, council members. So tonight you have before you the second viewing of the ordinance to join MCE as well as the resolution in, to join MCE and the MOU and have direct city manager to sign the MOU. At the last meeting, we discussed whether or not, what the public thought of this, of joining a CCA. So in response to that, we did a survey, an online survey on, that I'm going to be going over with you. Just also wanted to touch on a few things in the staff report. One is that you'll notice that we've also addressed the PG&E options for renewable energy and did the estimations of what the cost would be for those options versus for MCE's renewable matrix. Tonight as well, San Ramon has this on their agenda as well as Brentwood happening tonight. So I do not have those updates, but I think we're getting some texts over from the San Ramon one, we'll find out. And then also to clarify the opting out after the 60-day period. So we have in, from 60 days from now, or if you were to vote yes today, from now until 60 days after everybody switches to MCE, until that switch happens, whether it be in the spring of next year or the fall, depending on what MCE is able to pull together, the, up until that 60 days, it, there's no charge for, for customers to go back to PG&E. After that, customers can go back to PG&E. They pay an, a fee of $5 for residents or $25 for commercial accounts. Based on the amount of service IDs we had, if the city decided to completely leave MCE, we could potentially have $100,000 worth of fees if we did it after the 60 days. That's, it's a little bit up for negotiation because that's based on the number of service IDs we have, which are kind of how you look at it at commercial account. And, but I think that it would be less than that just because we have a lot of like irrigation controllers. So those are, those are individual service IDs, to give you an idea of what we're talking about. It's not just our buildings, it's all of the different accounts. That being said, the city would not be able to opt the entire community out. Individual community members would need to do that themselves or individual account holders would need to do them themselves. We, the city and the council has the ability to join MCE and join everybody with them with the option of each individual customer opting out. So with that, let me, I'm going to switch. Let's see, projector on. Stop. Alan's going to help me. What did I do? Thank you. So you have, on the diash, you have a little printout version of the survey that we did. The survey was very basic. It was just a quick, should we join or not? There was a little bit of an information at it. For those that didn't see it, this did not do, work on the printout. We started this as a, using Survey Monkey because we had the opportunity to do it free and quick and we wanted to get this out and get these results back to you. I'm, I'm pleased to report that a free survey is anything under 100 responses and we had 130 responses. So we, we do now have a monthly membership for right now to Survey Monkey because we got, we had a successful survey. So we did get a very good response. There was a very brief explanation of, of the, of CCEs as well as links to the staff report so that they could get more information if they wanted to on that, just to give you a really brief overview of that since it doesn't show up in our results. So as you can see, we had an in favor at about 50, what do we have, 56%, 57% to join MCE. And that was just a basic question, a yes, no. I was then interested to know what people thought about whether or not they planned to opt out if they did it. And one of the reasons I'm going over this with you online is because what I tried to do with the comments is sort them and you'll notice on your, on the, on the survey results, and for those in the audience, there are some in the back if you want to have a copy of it as well. I categorized some of the choices. So if we look down at the open-ended comments, you'll see that actually more people that took the survey, planned to opt out, opt out than voted no that we shouldn't do it. So that I think that there were people going in the spirit of wanting the choice, but not thinking that they were going to make that change themselves, but wanting to leave it open for other people. And if you look at the comments, and you have these, they're not categorized in your printout, but you can get an idea of how I kind of, I categorized it. There were comments that said it depended on cost. There were people that had a lot of concerns about how it's going to affect their existing solar. Basically, there's no real change your power purchase agreement if you're leasing. That all stays with the company like Vivant or SolarCity that put in your solar system. And, and basically all that changes is who's buying and selling that power, the, the power you don't, that you need to purchase that you don't generate. And then I know that MCE is here to go into that a little bit deeper for folks as well. And then, so you can just look through if you want to some of the, then there was just a bunch of ones, various things that I couldn't categorize, but I wanted to keep it really simple for you in a brief rundown, not to mention the fact that we, in an effort to try and get as many survey responses as possible, closed the survey at noon today. So not a whole lot of analysis. If you look at the open-ended question where I wanted to give people the opportunity to just tell us if there was anything else that they wanted to about this, we had about 30% of those comments of the 52 people that commented that were in support of MCE. 13 were in support of PG&E. There were other priorities. Those were the folks that felt that we, we shouldn't do this until we fixed other things. Then, you know, we had our rate concerns and once again, the solar, a few folks that still had questions about solar, probably the same ones. I will say that for, if, if there are folks that are not on Nextdoor, that the comments on Nextdoor and the discussions where we were promoting this survey were very similar to, to what was on the survey. In fact, several people in the effort, in the spirit of public discussion just reposted their comments on Nextdoor. And so it was really neat to see people having these kind of discussions and being able to get back to people. A few of the comments that happened, that occurred on Nextdoor, I was also very pleased to be able to report back to the community that we had some of those programs. They asked for, you know, incentives or programs for purchasing electric vehicles or alternative fuel vehicles and we're currently working on a solar shares program that does bulk purchasing for residents for PV panels and for EVs and EV chargers. And that starts in November, it'll be our second year with that program. So there was a lot of those kinds of things, things that, you know, it would be great for us to be able to do, but aren't as feasible and easy as signing up for MCE. So with that being said, I can take any questions and I know we have representatives here from MCE as well.
Do we have any public comments? Harry Thurston, followed by Don Weiss.
Me again, a second dose. Good evening. I'm Harry Thurston, I live in Antioch and I'm here to talk to you about MCE, joining MCE. And I want to thank you for allowing me to again speak in the affirmity for the city of Antioch, joining the MCE Joint Powers Authority of MCE. I urge the city council to approve the second read of the ordinance for Antioch to join with MCE, MCE in the procurement of electrical power that is of greater mix in general, green energy 50% or 100% versus that of PG&E. You have heard many times from many press presenters, myself included, the potential pros and cons of, of this program. However, the vast majority of the cities in Contra Costa County, along with the county incorporated areas, have joined MCE in the procurement of their electrical power from MCE. The list of cities include Concord, Danville, El Cerrito, Lafayette, Martinez, Moraga, Oakley, Pinot, Oakley, Pinot, Pittsburgh, Richmond, San Pablo, Walnut Creek, the county of Contra Costa Incorporated areas. I believe all these cities, cities obviously found the pros for joining MCE far outweigh the cons. In addition, I believe the northern waterfront cities, and I believe that all but one excluding Antioch have, of the northern waterfront cities have joined MCE. The, the northern waterfront communities contain many great opportunities to develop local solar and wind farms. It would be unfortunate, Antioch would be the only eastern. It would be unfortunate, Antioch would be the only eastern northern waterfront city to not join MCE to develop these green energy opportunities, bringing with potentials for short and long-term jobs and training. Lastly, by Antioch joining with MCE, better positions the city to achieve the goal for the Antioch City Council Resolution 2009/57, a 25% reduction of greenhouse gas by 2020, and an 80% reduction in greenhouse gases by 2035, with the least, and this being the least intrusive impact to the city's citizens relative to other options to make these goals. So our request, from, from an environmental and economic perspective, a yes vote for this Antioch City Council to approve the ordinance for the city to join with MCE for the procurement of city's electrical power, if not for ourselves in the present, but for the future of our children's and their children's, and the future of all of their innocent life on this earth. This step has to be taken. It's a small step that takes us down this road. Eventually, if we don't deal with it, it'll be our children dealing with this, and we need to take care, we need to take this step. I urge you to do that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Don Weiss.
I am very pleased to be here this evening and just have a couple of comments, but want to make sure there's plenty of time for you to ask any questions you might have about MCE. My name is Don Weiss. I'm the CEO of MCE, and was around back when we launched, so can tell you a lot about our history and, you know, our founding documents and all that sort of thing, if you have any questions along those lines. I wanted to give you an update on San Ramon. They actually did complete their vote and voted in favor of joining MCE, so that's just a news update, if that's of interest. And then, I, just to give you a quick, quick overview of some of the, the benefits that, that are resonating with a lot of the other cities that have chosen to join MCE, I think the fact that we're financially, financially stable. We've been serving customers since 2010. We're the, the first and longest-running CCA program, Community Choice Program, in the state of California, and we've really been a leader, I think, in helping getting other programs up and running. There are now eight active community choice programs around the state. We've been able to really set a nice model for them to follow. We also have a very experienced outreach and procurement team. Some of our outreach, one of our outreach focuses here in the audience, JR Killigrew, who you saw last time. I was here with a couple of other folks back in February, when you all were talking about this item. We have an experienced procurement team that's done a great job of locking in power supply contracts that will provide for rate stability and competitive prices going forward. 70% of the time that we've been serving customers since 2010, customers have paid less with MCE than they have with PG&E. It's great to have a choice, though, and many customers in our service territory, about 15% or so, do choose to opt out and stay with PG&E, which is great. We're still able to provide those customers with energy efficiency programs, and we have a lot of energy efficiency and other programs that help customers save energy, reduce the energy and water use in their home or business, and we also have a big focus in multifamily buildings, and helping folks get more rooftop solar and renewables built on site. I, I want to highlight that by joining MCE, you'd be able to achieve 26% of your greenhouse gas reduction goal without any cash, because you'd be redirecting an existing revenue stream that exists in your community to purchase cleaner energy and, and benefit the community at the same time. The last thing I'll say is that we have a net energy metering program and a feed-in tariff program that encourages local build-out of solar, and that can create a revenue stream into the community as well. The example that I'll give you is a project in Richmond, a two-megawatt project that just got built in the spring, and it is generating $500,000 a year to the landowner, because we're paying them for that energy supply under a 20-year contract. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Questions or comments from council? Councilmember Tiscorino.
Yeah, thank, thank you for your, your, your three minutes. You know, I don't question the business and, you know, how, how well I believe it, it can do, and how well it can do for, for our residents out here, because you have a choice. So, and I don't think anybody ever questions my support of, you know, clean air, green energy and things like that. I've been a strong advocate of those for, for as long as I can remember, ever since there's still work, and we've joined the Blue Green Alliance. I don't know if you've heard of that.
Oh, yeah.
So I've been, I participated in that. But when I voted last session, I still had some question in my mind. And the question in my mind is, even though it's not really a significant amount of money to some, but it could be to others, but it's just the fact that, you know, the ability of, or inability of folks knowing how to opt out, and, and that really concerns me at this particular point. You know, if, if we vote as, as it stands right now, all of us are automatically into this program, and there's going to be a lot of folks out there that don't even know that. And so my question is, you know, how are you going to educate, or how are you going to make the process easier? Because I know that, and Julie stated it in her part of her polling, that there's folks that want to give people the option, but they're willing to, they're, they're willing to opt out themselves, because they're comfortable with, with PG&E, and I think they have the right to do that. But I want to make sure that everyone is absolutely in the know, when this program starts, that they have the ability from day one to, to opt out, and how to do it, and how, easiest way to do that. So convince me how you're going to do that.
Great, yeah. I, I have a lot to say about that. We take community outreach really seriously. The biggest team that we have at MCE is our customer outreach team. When we were enrolling in Richmond, we went to over 100 events during the course of that year. We find out what events and what stakeholder groups we can meet with by developing a community outreach plan that's typically about 25 pages. We share it with council members and other leaders in the community to let us know if we're missing any groups. We don't want to be just talking to some sectors of the community, we need to get to all the sectors. So we go to fairs, farmers markets, festivals, homeowners associations, chambers of commerce, houses of worship, schools, et cetera. You name it, we want to be there. We don't want to have any accidental customers, that's kind of our mantra. So we found that the best way to get folks to understand who we are is to show up, stand at a table, hand out flyers, talk to people, be in the community. But we also go through more traditional media methods as well. So the, the great thing about having so many communities adjacent to Antioch, joining around the same time, is that there will be some mass media outreach happening through newspaper, print media. We'll also be, you know, we'll be doing billboards, you know, on, on BART and in other locations to give people more awareness about MCE, encourage them to learn more about it. And we will also, we, we send more mailers than are required by law to customers to make sure they're getting the information directly coming to their house. We've learned over time through practice that what works best is to send people a letter and an envelope with your city's seal on it and our logo on it. Folks are more inclined to look at something that comes in the mail that has their local seal on it. So we send two letters in envelopes, and then we also, in addition to that, we send three mailers that are more glossy, attractive, picturesque types of notices that incur, that attract to different types of folks. So a mix of those we found to be most helpful. We also have a call center that we require to have open 24/7 during the six-month enrollment period. So that would start three months before customers are cut over to our service, and would coincide with the, the large amount of community outreach that we would be doing. This year, for example, even though we're not enrolling a community, we're still doing a lot of outreach in Contra Costa County. We've been to over 50 events so far, and it's not even halfway through the year. We have many more scheduled. We have several every week throughout our communities. The call center makes it really easy for folks to opt out if they want to. It takes less than two minutes on the phone typically, unless there's super high call volumes, which is unusual. And we also allow folks to opt out on the website pretty easily as well. So our, our goal is to make it as easy as possible for folks to make a choice, and we like to help folks make that choice as soon as possible through a lot of outreach.
You said a lot in, in a few seconds, and I appreciate that. So to get something clear in my mind, and I understand the reach-out, you're, you're going to do a tremendous amount of reach-out, which is good, via, you know, events, you're going to put out a lot, a lot of mailers. So this information that you're going to be putting out, and this mailer is introducing yourself, I imagine, as, you know, one of the, one of the choices for, 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 for energy and power, but also a method of opting out. So that, including in that letter, will have an, an application that opt out, or how to, how to, how to opt out, or?
Yes. All five of the notices that we send out have, instruct you on how to opt out. We also instruct you how to opt up if you want to get the 100% renewable option, but we give, we provide a phone number and a website and information about how to do that.
Okay. And I, I have a question for, for our city manager. They had, you know, there's a claim that, you know, we, we are, by switching over or having the competition and, and using MCE, that, you know, we're by law holding, keeping down our greenhouse emissions. And, you know, we're, we're saving the standard, I guess. Am I saying that correctly? But doesn't PG&E adhere to that as well, or, or are they there in, in, in holding those standards as well, or are they not abiding by the, by the regulations?
You know, I, I would like to kick that question over to Julie, who I think will be able to answer it better.
So PG&E currently is required to have, I believe, 30% renewable energy. That is what they have. MCE offers 50 and 100% renewable energy. So there, so the greenhouse gas emissions reductions are higher with MCE, or with, usually with most CCAs, because that is one of their objectives, is to lower greenhouse gas emissions. So they're doing more than what is compliance as far as what energy, the energy matrix is supposed to have. That being said, the city has a, a resolution to reduce greenhouse gas emissions based on our 2005 emissions inventory. So we, our goal is to have 25% less greenhouse gas emissions for the community as a whole by 2020, and an 80% reduction by 2050. That is pretty close to in line with what AB 32, the state's greenhouse gas emissions reduction goal is. Theirs is just based on 19, returning to 1990 levels, and I, for planning purposes, just felt like I wanted a more concrete number that I could actually inventory. So we stuck with 2005, when we, when council approved that in 2007, I believe.
Thank you. Councilmember Ogerjock.
I don't have any questions for you, I apologize, but thank you for your presentation. So you have to have patience with me, because my, my thoughts, I wrote down, and they're kind of scattered right now. So in, in reading this and looking at the, the survey that you just gave us, there was only 127 people that did this, and 130 by your presentation, your slide up there. That's out of 114,000 people. So that's just not, to me, it's not a good, a, a good reporting back from the city. So as to councilmember Tiscorino's point, people don't know. They have no clue, and that's what I'm afraid of. And thank you for giving us what they comment on. One of the comments I read back here, it says, "Not produce projected new jobs, which be short-term." So people are already noticing that have completed this form, that the jobs that are being promised in this packet are all short-term jobs. The other thing that I'm looking at is, there's a lot of people that, in these letters that were given to us, they want a choice, they do have a choice. So they have PG&E's choice, which is a choice, but if we choose to opt in, we have chosen for those already, and as we heard tonight, some of our seniors are on a fixed income. $5 is not a lot to me, or you maybe, but it's a lot to our seniors. So for me personally, after listening to what I listened to earlier, I can't do this. I, I can't say that I'm going to opt in as a city and put this burden on homeowners to know what's going on. They clearly don't know. And I've been watching Nextdoor, and I've been watching some of the remarks on Nextdoor, and there's not a lot of remarks, there's not a lot of comments. There's a lot of comments on other things that I've noticed on there. Again, I'm going to go back to, on the first page, fiscal impact. There could be a minor cost for staff time and the program's implementation. I don't know what those costs would be, but there's still the possibility of a cost. Job creation, again, when I was reading the new agenda, the job creation just, to me, is just not massive enough for me to even consider it as a job creation. And then I really got to looking at these bills from PG&E. The regular service is $112.27, but MCE-like green 50% renewable is 30 cents different. That's it. I mean, we're not talking a major savings. Again, I'm going to go back to the choice. People have that choice by doing green from PG&E. I think that maybe if there's some way to track people that choose to go green with PG&E, we will still get our GHG numbers that we need to get. I don't know that we're tracking those. Sorry, I'm going to the back. Yeah, I, again, it's all on this bill, and I did talk to PG&E, and on this one statement that came in, it says, "Half the premium, which is $5 for typical home, funds renewable energy project development." I wanted to know if PG&E did that also. They do. It's $2, but they do do it. So me personally, God bless you, I just can't do this. And I, I like councilmember Tiscorino. The reason I brought this up last time is to bring it forth to see if people knew what truly was going on, and they don't. So in good conscience, I can't do this. Thank you.
Questions I have? As far as, as I was reading this and went, when it was looking at the job creation, when I went to the county's website that went to the initial study, it had talked about a lot of the job creation being based on cost savings, and the cost savings stimulating job creation in the community. The second form of job creation was the items three and four job creation, which were construction-type jobs, putting a lot of the solar panels out. The other question that I had was, it looks like there's a, an eyeball along the northern waterfront as far as installation, a lot of these solar panels. Is that correct? Is that the, the hope is to build a lot of these solar panels along the northern waterfront?
There is a lot of opportunity along the northern waterfront, particularly where there are facilities that are being underutilized currently, and there's existing interconnection capacity. Those sites might be a, a good fit for solar, and they also might be a good fit for solar combined with energy storage. What's happening on the grid today is there's so much solar across California, is that sometimes in the middle of the day, prices will actually go negative. And at the, in the evening, when the sun goes down and folks come home and turn on their AC and their lights, there's this very steep ramp and a need for energy to kick in at that time. As a result, that's causing battery storage and other forms of energy storage to become much more economic, and particularly in places where there's existing interconnection capacity. So we actually, today, we're meeting with one of your, one of your, one of the suppliers that owns a facility along the northern waterfront, that might be interested in doing this, this type of technology. And, and I think that there are opportunities, there's actually about 20 facilities along the northern waterfront, that could potentially be a good fit for, for this type of local development and local build-out. So we'll be looking at that. I think in addition to that, we have other programs that contribute to jobs, like our energy efficiency programs, which are more ongoing, where we have folks going in and auditing buildings. So that, that shouldn't be overlooked. We also have a small-scale feed-in tariff program, which encourages folks to build projects locally. This is a flyer about it, if you're interested. And we pay an above-market rate to anyone that builds a project within our service territory under the feed-in tariff. And we can't negotiate the, the price. It's a fixed price for 20 years, and that makes it easy for landowners and developers to acquire a location to build these projects out and get financing for it.
Now, it's, as far as that goes, are they looking at industrial land that we have and turning that into solar? Meaning, using the rooftops, and so we're still able to produce jobs underneath? Or are we looking at actually driving land that could be the potential future jobs, and doing them short-term to build solar panels, but long-term, other than the maintenance on those solar panels, there's no job creation?
Yeah, I think that the economics are going to drive that. So if there's land that is potential for housing or retail, for example, that's going to be more economically viable than ground-mounted solar. And in that situation, you'd be more likely to see roof-mounted solar, where there's under, underutilized roof space. Battery storage is very compact, it doesn't take up a lot of space, so it can typically be, be placed in an industrial area without impacting the, the use of the land. But I, I am not- But I am not suggesting that there would be solar coming to places that are feasible for other higher uses, such as retail or housing.
Because then, somewhere in the report, it was talking about 40%. Antioch has about 40% of the, of the potential solar production along the northern waterfront. And I mean, I have a fear that we turn some of our empty land along the northern waterfront that could produce long-term jobs into short-term jobs that end up producing energy, but not the long-term jobs that we need.
I actually came to that same conclusion when I was reading the report. We did not author that report. I think it was done with someone looking at Google Maps and making a lot of assumptions. I think that there are a lot more nuanced issues that need to be taken into consideration. And economics is really going to drive the utilization of the land. So I think you're exactly right.
What is, if we don't have the votes tonight to move forward, what are the ramifications of us? I mean, right now, if we go in, there's no cost to the city. If we choose not to go join into a community choice plan now, the threat is that, well, next year, we might not be accepting people in. Is there, will there not be? Is there no need for that? Is there an option for us to be able to go forward this year with outreach to get to the point where council feels comfortable that we've done an outreach that when we flip over, we're not going to be getting 150, 200 emails saying, "What the heck did you guys just do?"
Yeah, that's a great question. I think that the real crux of what needs to happen in order for us to enroll this community is we need to procure the power. We need to lock in the power to ensure stable rates and then, you know, conduct the outreach based on an assurance that we have the power to provide to your customers. For that, and that, the need to procure is really the, what the timeline is tied to. So our board is prepared to take a vote on July 20th to accept any communities in Contra Costa County. We're not accepting anyone from outside of Contra Costa County, and we do get requests from outside of the county, so I just want to clarify that. But our board will be voting on July 20th, because the inclusion period that's been open since December 1st is coming to an end. And we have communities that have already joined that want that enrollment to happen in May. We need to do our procurement in the fall, after board authorization. So for any communities that haven't made their decision by the end of June, we would need to consider that in the future by going back to our board in, at a future time. Typically, we have a retreat every fall where we talk about potential future expansion, including communities within the counties we serve. I think that because we take public outreach so seriously, we're going to be really focused on the communities that have chosen to join, and we're not going to have extra bandwidth to spend on other communities. That's not to say we wouldn't consider that in the future. I think there's a real interest in having a unified county and making sure that we don't have customers confused if they're on the border and they're, or they're hearing about the program, but they don't actually have access to it. That's not really good for anybody. So we would like to, I know that our board would like to accommodate any cities that don't join during this inclusion period, but it just might be a while, and there might be some extra costs at that time. We might see prices go up in the market, for example. It's hard to know what the, what the context will be in the future.
Thank you. Councilmember Tiscorino.
Yeah, on that note, how many cities in Contra Costa have joined?
We have five currently that are members and have been being served for some time. We have 10 more that have voted to join. So, or, I'm sorry, we have nine more that have voted to join.
So you have 14 at this particular point?
Yes.
Okay, out of 19.
Correct.
So the ones that, that haven't joined thus far, have they been notified or they're waiting, doing a wait-and-see?
Yeah, I think they're all aware. We've sent all of them a letter last fall, and then we had an inclusion period. And there are various reasons. A couple of them have local issues that they're really wanting and needing to focus on and aren't, aren't able to, don't have the bandwidth to take this up right now. That's the, that's the most common thing that I've heard from communities that aren't taking this up. We have gotten questions from some of those other communities about could they take this up in the future? And we provided the same answer, I just provided on that question.
Well, the reason why I ask is, you know, you have four or five other cities that are either contemplating or waiting. You know, would they be afforded that opportunity within a year? I mean, would they come back to have that discussion? You know, and that's one of the things that I'm kind of looking at, at this particular point, is, you know, I want to see how other cities fare, to be honest with you. You know, because, you know, other than Concord and Richmond, you know, all the other cities are fairly small. And I think they can probably take a little blunt, but, you know, if the city has to take a blunt of some of these costs because of the inability of them knowing exactly how to opt out, and that's still, that's still getting to me at this particular point, whether you spend millions of dollars in outreach, there's still going to be a lot of folks, and I'll tell you, a lot of us have done campaigns and put out a lot of money on mailers, and guess where they go?
Yeah.
Right, right in the garbage can. So, so that gives me a little bit of concern at this particular point. So I was teetering, believe it or not, last council meeting. I wanted to hear a little bit more. It's just, I'm having troubles being convinced at this particular, I know it's a great program, and I stated that, and I support the program. I just don't support, you know, the method at this particular point of educating the public and letting them know that they have their options of opting out. And once I feel comfortable with that, I think, full within my heart feel comfortable with that, I think I can support this program, but I'm not there yet. So, you know, I'd love to hear from other colleagues on this point too, because, you know, this is a very important issue. And it's a potential, as you state, it may cost us a little more money if we decide to wait and do it in another year, and it may not be. But it also might be beneficial to us to see where the other folks are standing and how, and how it works for them, and if we get a lot of good positive feedback from these bigger cities. So, you know, that's, that's how I feel at this particular point, so.
Thank, and I might comment, since you brought up Richmond, we do hear a lot, the Richmond mayor, Tom Butt, is actually our vice chair and the head of our executive committee. And one of the things that was important to him when making this decision was that, you know, he realized that customers in Richmond didn't have a choice with PG&E. They couldn't opt out of PG&E. And so with MCE in the community, folks can opt out of MCE. They can choose one or two. And that gives you the ability to choose the cheaper option if you want to, or choose the greener option if you want to. And it creates more choice when, without MCE, there was no choice. I know that was an important factor for him and other council members in Richmond.
Thank you. We have a public comment? Are there no more public comments? How does that? I'm okay with the two public comments. Alan?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just my thought, at first, I was opposed to this. I didn't like the idea of this forcing people into it. But people can opt out, and it gives people the choice. But the key thing, to my mind, at this point, it doesn't cost the city much or any money, and it helps meet those stated, the state goals of the greenhouse gas emission reduction. Okay? And that is a key to, in my mind, of why this choice should be allowed or brought in. Because my concern is, long-term, what the cost of reducing by that 26% for our city will be down the road. And if there can be, maybe it's compromised with three months from now. We'll study it, let's see what others do in three months. But I think this needs to go forward and allowed to meet those goals that the state has for our city that will cost us a whole lot less or nothing now. Thanks.
Linda Sullivan, is this about item number six?
What we're talking about?
Yes.
Good evening. I'm Linda Sullivan. I live in Antioch. And I have gone out of my way to get solar panels, to my own cost, in my house. And I am curious why this council has not been forthright in getting this information out, that there was this opportunity for MCE. And my ability to be able to work with someone else other than PG&E, because they're, they were the only guys in town, to be able to get more use. I can't, out of my, my panels, I have been trying to call PG&E, go to PG&E, to get some understanding about, okay, I wouldn't spend all this money because I believe in renewable energy. And I can't even get anybody at PG&E, you know, on the phone. There is only one person that you can talk to, and the person is not available. So there's a lot of reason that people don't know about these kinds of things. And what is this council doing to say, "Antioch citizens, hey, there's this ability out here. All I found out was from some other people." So I'm thinking that this is an opportunity. We need to move on it now. I want to see something more happening for the expense that I put out, because I believe in renewable energy. It's the right thing to do. So let's take the opportunity now. Plenty of people who don't know about it would love to know about it. A little survey, like 100, yeah, I agree. That wasn't hardly much, but that's not our fault that this information is now. Thank you for listening.
Are there any, any other council comments or questions? Councilmember Thorpe.
Yeah, if, you seem eager to say something. But if you could, her comment about making use of her solar panels, can you respond to that? Because I wasn't clear on how she could make use of her solar panels.
Yeah, so we, we have a, an equivalent program to PG&E called the Net Energy Metering Program. It's a, folks that become our customers that automatically transition. They don't have to fill out any paperwork or anything. But what, what changes is if you are generating more energy than you use in a year, we will mail you a check for the extra. Right now, that doesn't happen for folks getting served by PG&E. Those credits just get absorbed and they go away. But if folks are generating more than they use, we actually pay them the retail rate plus a kilowatt, one cent per kilowatt hour. And, and so that has actually been a tremendous value for some of our residential customers, but more importantly, for some of our school districts and municipal entities that have solar. Because if you're generating more than you use, you get a big check. In fact, we're going to be bringing a big check to Benicia next month, next month, for $129,000. They weren't expecting that when they joined MCE. We weren't expecting that either, but that's how it worked out for them. And then other communities, like some of our smaller communities are getting checks around $40,000, for example. So that's one thing that's different. We also don't allow credits to ever zero out, so they accumulate year over year. And that's really, to encourage people to install solar, that also creates jobs.
So the credits that PG&E offers, what do you mean by, when, so what are, what is the credit applied to? And what do you mean they just go away?
Yeah, sorry for not being more clear. So the, what I mean by that is the, if you are generating energy from your solar system more than what you use, PG&E and MCE will count, for every kilowatt hour that you generate, we subtract out the, a kilowatt hour that we would charge you otherwise for the power.
So PG&E gives the credit, you give the check?
Yeah.
But it's effectively the same thing?
No, because at the end of a year, it's called your true-up period with PG&E, at the end of that year, your credits zero out, and they start from scratch. So if you've, let's say you've accrued $100 worth of credits with PG&E, at the end of your true-up period, once they bring you to a zero bill, that's the best that they will do for you, is they will zero out your bill. We will zero out your bill, and then if you've continued to generate, we will mail you a check for any additional energy that you produced.
Okay. So if she's not taking advantage, if that's not happening with her right now, that won't happen with you either?
If she's not over-generating, you're correct.
Right, yeah.
Yes.
It's the same, you're, it's going to be the same conclusion with MCE.
Yeah, that, this is, yeah, let's keep, keep this to a...
Okay, and just one last point I wanted, because I also keep talking about these jobs and solar panel installations. MCE reported at the mayor's conference that Antioch is leading, as well as Brentwood and Oakley, in solar panel installation in Contra Costa County. Is that correct?
No, we didn't participate in that conference.
I was at the mayor's conference a few weeks ago, and an MCE representative gave up and, came up and gave a report, and they congratulated Antioch, Brentwood, and Oakley for leading in solar panel installations.
Okay. Well, it is certainly possible that you all are leading in solar panel installations. I don't have that data in front of me, but that could be accurate. Do you know who was there? Oh, okay, there we go, sorry.
No, the only, the only... I don't know that, this is, yeah. We're, we've closed the public comment. So this item is before council.
I can comment a bit on our solar generation. We currently have about 20 megawatts of solar production in Antioch on rooftops in commercial and residential. So we are, we are doing very well in our solar production. Along the lines of the difference between PG&E and MCE for solar production, PG&E will not allow you to put in more panels than you, or they will not, they, they will not purchase more power than you will generate in a year, where MCE will let you. So as an example, if you, if your system for your residential service should be sized at, let's say, four kilowatts, a system of four kilowatts, and you have more room on your roof to put more on, and you generate more than you use, at the end of your true-up period, if you have a $75 credit with PG&E, they take, they get that credit. With MCE, they will issue you a check for that credit. So it's an encouragement also to increase your solar production above what your residential needs are. So that's an additional option for customers with the, with the MCE program.
Are there any more council comments or questions? If there's not, do I have a motion? If there is no motion, this item then dies for lack of emotion. Then it is tabled.
Are there none received?
Staff communications?
No staff communication.
Council communications and future agenda items. If there is nothing else at this meeting, I'd like to close this meeting in the names of Jane Parsons, Clark Gelhoss, and Dr. Howard Friesen.